We're going to get started. We had originally scheduled ourselves for an executive session. We find that there's no need for that. That's why the timeframe has changed somewhat. Okay? And so we see no reason why we can't just begin to move forward. This evening, I'm going to defer to the town administrator regarding the presentation of the -- she is the one that did the RFP and also notified appropriate agencies for releasing of the information, newspapers and so on and so forth. And she received applications and what have you. And so, that being said, Marlene?
As we know, we issued -- the town issued an RFP, Request for Proposals for the Former Center School. A number of developers requested the RFP. We received one proposal from Barry Roberts and Donald Southwick, who are present this evening. And really, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the proposal that was submitted. It is for 55 and older condominiums. Mr. Southwick and Mr. Roberts are proposing eight units in the facility. And I know I've shared with the selectmen, it looks like a solid proposal. And I'm still, you know, talking to references and everything looks pretty good. But I believe the board will -- this will be a topic for our September 13 meeting, at which time the board will probably -- I expect that the board will bring this to closure. So...
Hopefully tonight, if you could spend just a couple minutes talking about the proposal, the content that's being televised or will be on our local cable channel and other folks can hear who are not here, present today. And then, following that, we have an opportunity to ask some questions.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come here and talk about our proposal. As you know, I've had the opportunity as a contractor, owner and developer to do a number of old schools. And when I was made aware of the fact that this school was going to be redeveloped or requested to be redeveloped, we came and took a look. And we have a great facility there. It's a solid building. And I think it can be redeveloped very nicely into 55 and over project. I would have loved to see a little more square footage of land to facilitate parking in the rear. So we chose -- but your RFP is what it is. So we obviously are living within those guidelines and solving that problem by decreasing the number of units and putting parking in the lower level of the building. And then putting the extra parking to be parked edges, as you see on our site plan. We think that we can retain the front and the two sides that you requested be retained. We will need to put energy efficient windows into the building, but we would certainly be doing that, looking to maintain historic quality of the building. We think that, you know, some of the blacktop in the front can go away, the driveway that goes to the side door that we choose for deliveries, et cetera, go away and we can do some landscaping that will start to soften the front of the building. In the back is where our major changes will be made. So you have a shed structure on the back that we intend to remove. We would then punch, I guess that's the appropriate word, punch holes in the lower level to create the garages, eight of those across, plus an entrance that would lead into an elevator that would service the upper two floors. We don't have any intentions of trying to use the third floor, the attic space. With all the steel beams up there, it's pretty much impractical to use that. It will be the site for some of the HVAC equipment that services the top clearance especially. So then, when you get up, start going up into the first and second level, we call the basement, the lower level, first and second, then we would start to put a mix of one and two bedroom units. And at the rear elevation, we would propose to put some decks so that people can have an opportunity to enjoy the views to the beach. And, you know, in the winter, maybe out to the river, you can see the river. I haven't been up that high in the -- but I would think from the third level, you probably could get a view of the river. So we would remove, again, we would punch out some holes there and put some either sliding glass doors or French doors so that we could access a deck there on two levels. So it'd be at the second level and the third level. We would try to, as much as we possibly can, work, because it's expensive if we don't, because the building is very well built, work within the existing structure as much as possible. There will be, I don't know, I think I gave an example of how we, in the William Street School, I think it was, we took the blackboards and we cut the blackboards and used them as window sills. And we even left some of the blackboards in the roof, you know? Whether, you know, that'll be attractive to somebody or not. I mean, so, obviously, all new plumbing, wiring, heating. We're a little problem because we don't have the natural gas that everybody would love to have, but we'll figure that out. It'll be electric or we could consider propane because it'll be so energy efficient because we'll be building within the structure to create the insulation that's not there now. You know, it's just old nationary walls, so we'll want to break those. Plus, it makes it so we can wire and run wiring through the walls and not have to furrow through the concrete out of the brick. So we were a little questionable about the flooring that's in there. We love to have wood floors in the building. When we walked on them at the site visit, they're a little squeaky, so we're going to have to try to figure that out. And, you know, it wouldn't be too bad from the first floor to the garage area, but, you know, we don't want any squeak in between them. We can avoid it. So, you know, those are the things we're going to have to work out. Our architect is John Kuhn, Kuhn Middle Associates and Airs. I've worked with John for the last 30 years. Don and I have employed him to do numerous projects for us. Right now, he's doing a couple for me as we speak. So he'll be developing the plans as we go forward. We think that rope is in pretty good shape. The people on the top obviously need some work. There is some structures on the back, there are some eyebrows on the back that we'll probably be closing up, basically, so we can make the attic tight, keeping them there so it looks the same. We want to make sure that the outside of the building looks the same. There's, obviously, as you mentioned in your RFP, there's a few things that need to be worked out with it down, about easements. And I think that, you know, that's something that could be worked out once we, if you choose us to move forward with this. You know, we can work with John Ponce or with the select ward or whatever to see what easements each of us need so you can have access to the rear, so we can have access around our building. We've kind of designed it in a one-way situation. I mean, I'm just, just left to right, enter on the left or round and out on the right. You know, that's not set in stone, but we will need to be able to circulate around the building as I'm sure the fire department will want to make sure that that will happen. We will be sprinkling the building, not that we'll be fired on us by the building code. So, you know, it'll be a safe environment, you know, fire alarm sprinklers, elevators, everything that, all the modern amenities that people have come to this town, you know, facility like this.
Ask your question?
Sure, I guess.
What will the inside of the apartments, will they be aging currently or handicap accessible? Or, I know it's 55 plus.
Right. Well, there's all different ways to accomplish that. You can make them strictly handicap accessible, which is handicap ass and drive bys or everything, or you can make them what I call accessible, which isn't necessarily that 100%, but build it so it can be. So that if down the road, you need to grab by by the toilet or in the shower or something, we've already planned for it, you know? And, you know, if you were to build a handicap kitchen, let's say, then, you know, you have to have lower counters and something. But, you know, we could do that if somebody requested it. Ordinarily, we wouldn't start out that way in a 55 and over, but we're certainly willing to listen.
Will these be pre-sold for floors?
We hope so.
So customization is possible.
She was the first one.
Customization, that's what you're saying.
Customization is possible, that's right. You know, it becomes a point where customization isn't practical if we're so far along and then you come forward and say, "I want to change all these walls." But if we talk early, once we get our plans flushed out, as I said, there's some barriers we don't want to go through these walls if we don't have to. So, you know, if, once we get our plans roughed out, we're certainly willing to talk with people and say, you know, "You want your bedroom to be bigger or to be smaller or, you know, you don't like the kitchen?"
Great, thank you.
You mentioned an elevator off the rear.
Yeah.
Are there going to be elevators on the north and south side or as well?
One elevator in the center.
Yeah.
So if you think about four garages here, four garages there, an elevator entranceway there, it goes in and then it's going to go right up to the center of the building. The stairs that exist there, will it be the emergency egress stairs?
Okay.
Because the elevator can't be emergency egress. So we have to have two ways out. So those stairs are far enough apart so we can use those.
Good. Very good. You mentioned easements. I had some interest in raising that as a topic. What type of easements are you talking about?
Well, I just was trying to respond to what you mentioned, the RFP, that I think that it was written that the town would be seeking some easements to make sure they could access the field in the rear.
Oh, yes.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Which I don't, you know...
Yeah, the use of that field, quite frankly, is in stone. It'll never be changed. That fight 10 years ago was unbelievable, believe me. And rightly so. Because they, for justifiable reasons, they wanted that accommodation. And finally, it was successful. And I don't foresee that ever changing.
Don, perfect example. When Don and I remodeled, we bought in Amherst a funeral home, 151 Amherst Street, and we made that, remodeled the existing funeral home into two units. And then we added units to it. But we found that people want garages. So when we looked at your site plan, and that's why I said we would have liked to add a little more room, because if we could have, and in that project, we put garages remotely as well as underneath. So here, we're going to be living to one car. So there, everybody had two characters under, okay? Because we built a pre-standing structure plus we were able to put underneath the building. So that's why I say we would, but we don't want to build a structure in the back there that's going to block the view.
Got you.
And they get called to get in and out of the garage space that we're going to construct within the building.
So what would you do if you had, where would you want additional space?
Well, you know, almost to the backstop. That would have been my perfect, if we could have taken land to the backstop, we think we could have really created and done some nice landscaping and stuff in the rear. Now, we're pretty much stuck with working with the blacktops that's there. Because by the time you drive down and pull into a garage, we're going to need that width.
Yeah, right.
You know, we were just hoping for a little more room, to have a little breathing room so we could do some nicer stuff down there. It is what it is. That's what you put out there, that's what we did on it. We're not complaining about that. We're just telling you about that.
No, no, we understand that. It's not a problem.
Another question on, in section, I think it's five, last item. In lieu of a performance bond, we propose a letter of credit to secure performance as developers to the town. That's mutually acceptable to all parties. What was the rationale? I mean, in the RFP, we did call for a performance bond.
Maybe I should speak.
Don has been in the insurance business.
A little bit about me. Barry and I, our relationship goes back maybe 50 years. We both grew up in Amherst and we really didn't get involved with each other until 1993. In 1993, I owned an insurance agency, an insurance brokerage business in Amherst called Larry Cuddington. And I was renting space at that time, very close to East St. Louis, it was right in the center of town. And I was looking to own the building. And some of you may remember, there used to be in the center of Amherst College Road Store, had a fire in 1987, burned. And then remained closed up and boarded up for about five years. In 1992, I think Barry bought it. This is a, it's a tough building. It's a building that was built in the 1800s. It had been gutted by fire and it was a disaster. And sat there for five years with no interest in it until Barry bought it. And as soon as I got the deal, I called him and said, "Barry, I'd like to have a piece of that building, so what do you mean? Let's take a commercial condominium. And I'd be interested in the top two floors, we could put an elevator in it, he's interested in the bottom floor." That's when our relationship started and the two of us put that building back together. New steel, wiring, plumbing, you name it, elevator. As it turned out, we split the building, essentially, Barry owns half, my wife owns the other half. When somebody said in a newspaper, tons of, I forgot how they termed it, a property manager, property elements in my wife's name, I manage it. I'm the guy who does all the work, she flex all the doughs. So that's the way that works. But my experience was in insurance, it was around, it's been close to 40 years in insurance. So when you say a performance bond, my experience was that performance bonds, when people ask for them, is basically on a building that you were going to own. You want to make sure that the contractor, if they did not perform to the level that you were going to be satisfied, whether you did the building on time, what you wanted, or if something happened to that contractor, let's say when you went bankrupt because it was a significant job. The insurance company would stand in that place of the contractor, then hire and build out. Performance bonds, when you ask for one of those from the insurance company, they expect zero losses on performance bonds. What they then ask a contractor to do is essentially put up the money. So if it's a $2 million job, you have to put up either current assets or money of some kind that they have control of. They're essentially escrow. So if they need that money because the contractor can't perform, they take that money and do the job. But again, it's predominantly for municipality that's doing a business, a building or some project, that they're going to end up owning. In this case, we're going to end up owning it. We're going to take the risk, we're going to perform. And the letter of credit is really from a bank that says, "We're going to give these guys the financial ability to complete this job. We're going to stand behind them. We're going to give them the resources to do it." So essentially, I think you have to look at Barry's track record, mine to some degree with Barry, and say, "Can these guys do the job? And do they have the financial wherewithal to do the job?" Because the letter of credit is something where, and that's one of the reasons I think you have fewer contractors looking at this, maybe, because it becomes prohibitive. It takes a long time to get them. You have to supply a lot of financial information. Then you got to put up the resources that they put in escrow and hold anyways.
And charge your interest.
We don't want to go through that.
Percentage.
And that's right. And then we have to pay a premium for it. So we think, you know, Greenfield Savings Bank, they've been fantastic with us and with Barry. And I think predominantly because he has a track record that goes back 40 years. When you look at the work that he's done, the body of work, the risks he's taken, he's not had a job that he hasn't completed. We haven't had a job that we haven't, but we've had jobs where we haven't made any money. Marsh House is one of them, the funeral home they talked about. We walked away from that, done, completed, sold all units except one, which I bought and still own, and I'm happy I own it. I don't live there, but I retain it. And when we finished that job, the interesting thing, Barry looked at me and said, "You know, I'm happy with the job. We didn't make money, but we built something that looks damn good and it's good for Amherst. We think the same will happen here. Whether we make any money or not is a risk that we're willing to take. But when we're all said and done, we're going to walk away and look at that building and say, 'We did a nice job and we're happy with what we did and our reputation is important to both of us. So we're going to do a good job for you.'" And, but we're not going to, I don't think, supply a performance.
One of the things in the information that you supplied and that we were able to acquire, just for townspeople's information, you alluded to the banking scenario that you deal with. That was outstanding. I was very, very impressed with the letter of recommendation that they supplied.
Well, they did a good job for us.
It was just, as I say, it was, I thought, absolutely outstanding. And nice and brief, too, as a former teacher.
Well, we've worked with them before. You know, the other thing that Barry brings to the table, we bring to the table, is we have a group of people that we've worked with on similar projects. These aren't, they're not new plumbers, electricians, and these are people that are part of a team that we have used over and over and over again. And so there's a working relationship with all these people that really helps facilitate jobs such as this. And again, you've got a great building here. I mean, it looks in disrepair, and certainly it is, but it's nothing like a cook block in downtown Amherst that had been in a fire and sat there for five years. Let me tell you, that was a disaster. And it's become just a phenomenal building. I mean, we own it together and I own half of it and I have never had any period of vacancy in that building. And I've got financial people in there, attorneys in there, venture capital people in there, a guy that's involved in Bitcoin is in there. So it's just been a lovely site and it's a terrific building. So we'll do the same here. Anything else?
Any other questions?
I kind of want to go back about this land issue. If you had a little more land, it would be to build an unconnected garage, right? It would be just more landscaping or would you thinking originally of having more land, maybe on this north side, to build a garage structure or?
On the north side?
East side.
Or some other side other than the east side?
Well, we would like the opportunity, here's what we ended up doing. When we first looked at the building, we thought, "How can we develop all three floors and get the maximum number of units in the building?" So obviously. So Don and I sat there and said, "Yeah, but the cars are going to be parked right here. Who wants to buy a unit that's just going to stand and sit in their living room and look at cars coming and going all the time?" So I said, "Well, if we had a little more land, we could put the garage remotely down." I really think that this is the best solution for that property. It doesn't give us the maximum number of units in there. I think it's gentler, a little gentler to the building. I think it's nice that the garages are inside. I think I'm happy to accept the fact that the extra car that somebody might have or the visitor can park to the left and right of the building, kind of out of the way of the building. It would be nice to have a little more to be able to landscape there, do a nice fence and some landscaping. You know, I think we're satisfied with what we have.
Thank you. Yeah, and don't get me wrong, Don and Barry, one of the questions I have is around the financial strength of the proposal. And, you know, there's no question that, you know, you guys have got a very successful track record. And, you know, it's my understanding that you actually got some irons in the fire right now, where you're in the process of construction and building some things out. And I guess I have two questions. One is, is there a formal partnership between the two of you?
There will be. There will be. We'll form one to do this building.
Okay.
We formed separate LLCs every time we do a new project. So we'll form a separate LLC. We'll both be members of the LLC, just two of them.
And the other thing is that, and as Pat pointed out, you know, you've got a great commitment letter from Greenfield Savings Bank in terms of the financing that you would be seeking. My experience is that the financing that you would be seeking, it doesn't cover the entire cost of the project. Usually, it's, there's something the bank asks the...
They want some skinning again.
Exactly.
That's our skin.
Exactly. And I guess, I guess this is where I'm kind of coming from, is that, you know, where is the skin? Do you have the skin?
We got the skin.
Okay. And is there any way to satisfy the town and perhaps the board's questions about your current financial strength? Are there financials that are available whereby you can show us the balance sheets of the LLC that would be formed or the LLCs that exist?
Well, the LLC that will be formed will be formed solely for that purchase of this building.
Right.
You know, it's almost like every time we purchase a property or do a project, it's a separate LLC.
Yeah.
Okay? So there isn't, you know, what comes with the LLC is us behind it and our financial wherewithal. Our financial balance sheets that back that up, that give the bankers...
Right.
So they can sleep at night to say, "Is there backing there that, you know, Don owns outright, Barry owns outright, so that he's not mortgagers to the help?" So they are happy that we have that amount of capital behind us?
Assets.
Capital assets, whatever you want to say, to be able to do that.
Every year, every year, Greenfield Savings Bank sends me a form.
Update this.
I want my financial information. And so I spend a half a day putting together all my financial information and what our obligations are. I have no debt. I shouldn't say I have no debt. I have debt on one building, that's 2535 University Drive in Amherst that Barry and I built together. We do have a loan from Greenfield Savings Bank on that building. But I would say that the debt-to-asset ratio is about 40% right now. We probably owe, there's three of us in that LLC. Maybe we owe 600,000 on that building, it's valued currently at a million eight.
Okay, and the other LLCs, there's no doubt, no gone.
I think the key is, for me personally, is if Greenfield Savings Bank is satisfied.
Again, they ask for our financials every year. And again, they wouldn't have written that letter if they weren't very, very comfortable with where we are. And anytime we take on a new obligation, obviously, they want to know about it. They'll want to know about this as well.
Well, I think the past history that I think we've all alluded to in parts of what's in here with your past projects just, you know, speak wonders for the type of business people you are and the type of creativity that you have, so.
We do really care about leaving, you know, especially at a town like this. We didn't grow up here. We're outsiders here. So when we finish this building, we want to make sure that not only is the town and the people in the town happy with it, we're happy with it. Yeah, sure. Because we're going to leave our name here when we, when the project's done. It's important, though.
Your comments and those who support you clearly indicate that that's not going to be a problem.
How about your construction, build-out timeframe, assuming that you guys can come to agreement with the town, the buy, sell, and then the next 60, 90 days?
Purchase, sale, and next, well, decision point within 60 days. It doesn't necessarily take 60 days at all. And then closing within 60 days after that.
That's not an issue, obviously. But one of the things that I need to understand about what it's going to take, if we're going to need site plan review, what the building inspectors are going to require. So it's going to take us usually about six months for John Kuhn to work through all the planning stages and to do the, you know, the building inspector's going to want to see our plans, our Chapter 9 narratives, all that information that goes into submission for a building permit. We may be, in some towns, we can get a demolition permit, which allows us to start doing some, you know, removal of non-bearing stuff, you know, cleaning out the facility, stuff like that. But basically, I think you're looking at, you know, into the springtime before any heavy construction would start. By the time we do all the paperwork and get everything going, and as we all know, asbestos has to remove, so how long that takes and...
Right.
Fine, it's reasonable.
Can the board at all talk about where the town is at with the hazmat removal issue?
Let me make one comment. In the proposal Mr. Roberts and the company here submitted, in lieu of the minimum price that we requested, they offered to spend up to $300,000 to deal with the remediation as contracted by the town. So that's a significant savings to the community that I think folks listening need to be aware We have, we have been working with the contractor concerning the remediation.
Yeah, we're in the process of putting that out to bid.
So we're well along on getting that out.
Once we get through next Tuesday... Once we get through next, next Tuesday's meeting, then from the town's perspective, and I think I speak for my colleagues as well, everything should, not everything, but pieces should be in place for all parties to move forward within the time constraints and so on, as indicated. It's not in our interest to, you know, to delay it. Absolutely not. And your experience and your record clearly indicates that you're, we're in the same ballpark.
Yeah, but we, you know, one of the things that we want to do is do it right, you know? So, we want to make sure that the planning board, wherever I have to go, or where we have to go, we go, you know? If we need site plan approval, if we need, you know, I'm going to have to research that to see what is required of this, by this town.
Yeah.
I think, I think the good news is that the, the different departments you're going to have to deal with on a go-forward basis and the board, you know, it's a very positive, obviously, a positive happening in Hatfield. So, I don't think you're going to run into any roadblocks. I understand there's still the process and procedures, but I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't think there's going to be anybody stonewalling, at least on purpose. It's just a matter of getting the right, getting you to the, to the correct people and know who the players are. And then once that's all figured out going forward, I'd like to think that you won't have any issues as far as that goes.
If you have any questions regarding individuals within the town that seem to be raising questions that don't seem germane to what we're trying to do here, don't hesitate to speak with Marlene, and she is our intermediary, and very knowledgeable and well-versed in handling varying situations for your benefit as well as the town's. Obviously, her primary interest, interest is protecting the town, but I wouldn't hesitate. In fact, singly as a member of the board, I would prefer that you be in touch with Marlene, that so we can streamline whatever the process may be, and you're not having to deal with five, six, seven, eight different people. Small town, but we want our interests protected. She does that well, and we know you will.
What we have to do is asking, and I'll ask Marlene to help with this, is to convene a meeting, so everybody hears the same story. Have my architect come, we'll get the fire department, we'll get the PPW, everybody that's important to make this thing work. Sit around the table, what do you need, what do you need, what do you need? And, you know, that way, we all hear it, we all hear the same thing. They all get, instead of me going to five different people.
It's a great idea there.
And, you know, I'm sure Marlene will help me set that up, because the lines of communication are already open, you know? She called me and said, you know, meet tonight and stuff like that, so.
Good.
Along those lines, are copies of that proposal available in, like, the clerk's office or Marlene's office?
I can print out a copy for you.
Well, I'm not saying you're me alone. I'd be interested in looking at it, but if somebody else wanted to come in?
Well, I have a copy available in my office you can look at, but if you were interested in taking a copy, I was just suggesting I can make a copy.
Was it soft copy, any worse?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I scanned it. I scanned this into the copy, or I can print it out. I, the original I have, I'd prefer to keep in the office.
Okay.
Sure.
I just wonder, since Barry and Donald have, as part of their offer, offer to offset the cost of abatement, wouldn't it be in the town's interest to turn, to not go through a bid process and consider them the owners of the building at some point, and then let them deal with the abatement, where they're not subject to prevailing wage and some of the guidelines for, that a municipality has to go through? I would think their $300,000 ceiling would go a lot further in the private sector than it would be for us to be bidding this project.
The course of action that we have taken has been in the strong recommendation of Town Council. And so, and so, he would have to be consulted and so on and so forth. If that is deemed first possible, second recommended, then we have a starting point. Right now, we don't without his involvement.
Yeah, I, I think to Larry's point, I believe where you're coming from, is you've got to remember that nothing's been finalized yet, Larry, right? So, but we know we've got to do something, somebody's got to do something with that building from an asbestos perspective. So, to your point, yes, every, we're taking that into account, but until everything, I guess, you know, signed, sealed, delivered, we've still got to make the proposals and look for the bids and the quotes. Doesn't mean we have to act on them.
Well, right.
Barry, if you recall your article, the language in the article that was off, that was approved at town meeting authorized the town to do the asbestos removal.
It did, but now the situation's changed a little, that we have a developer that's willing to take that on. That, that's a significant difference.
Well, we'd have to resend that article.
That's right.
We'd have to resend the article.
Again, the point is, is that what we need to do is we need to check, to check the legal ramifications in accordance with the whole process, and then move forward. Let's not put a lot of negatives out here that in the long, in the long run are not going to be a problem, quite possibly.
Yeah, we're looking at everything.
Yeah.
But you know the process. If there's a town meeting and a town article, then that's...
Right. Well, I, yeah. My question is, is related to this and, and the hazmat removal process, and I'd like to direct it to Barry, in terms of how, how advantageous it might be to you if you were to get, if the selectmen were to decide to sell the building to you guys? How advantageous would it be for you to also do the hazmat removal? If in fact you replied to the RFP, they evaluated all bidders for that, and how advantageous would it be for you guys to actually do that hazmat removal?
Well, obviously, we would be dealing with a subcontractor, because we're not licensed to, to do that work. So, that's something we'd have to think about and talk about. Obviously, private sector, as the other gentleman mentioned, is not subject to prevailing wage, so there may be some savings there. I just don't know. I guess I'd have to read the RFP to answer that fully, to understand what that meant.
I was just thinking about the...
I have employed as abatement companies before in a lot of projects, you know? So, I certainly know a lot of them, and, you know...
The issue I'm trying to deal with is...
It'll depend who's doing the hiring.
Yeah, the issue I'm trying to deal with is that if, if it's not Barry that does it, and someone else comes in and it's a, it's a licensed hazmat removal company, they're going to want to finish that, do that process, finish it, close it, before the sale actually takes place in the building. And so, what I'm wondering about is, you know, if it, if it just happened to be the, the guy that's developing the building, that's doing the hazmat removal, the fact that it's, that it's integrated and coordinated, that there can be some, some, it can facilitate the whole process if that were the case. I, this is an assumption I make.
Well, I had asked Marlene that when she had the proposal ready to go out, if she would let me know so I could take a look at it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? The board of our, our invited guests?
I don't have a comment. I'd just like to make a comment and once again reiterate, it's nice to have you, to have you both here and to get the project that, that you submitted.
We're excited, we're excited about it.
I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be a great, great project.
We're excited about the project, you know? It's the kind of thing that he and I look for, we find once in a while, but not that often. But when we find one, it's the kind of stuff that we like doing. We've done it before. We're excited about it. So, thank you.
It's a very strong proposal, and this has been an issue, been kicking around the town here for over a decade, so.
Yeah, where you been? The last nine years.
Great to see something finally closing on this.
Well, we will put it to bed in a positive manner. So, let me understand the timeframe. It's the 13th. You would like, Donald will not be able to be here on the 13th, so I'm happy to come. At what time? And here, or there, where will we be?
Well, I don't know that that's necessary, but...
We could come back if it's necessary, because we have not had an opportunity to review any of the general council, our town council's comments regarding on the...
I will.
If you want me here, I'll be here.
Right, okay.
I will let you know.
That would be on the 13th.
We're talking about the 13th, because that's our next selectment meeting. It wasn't particularly for this topic.
And we certainly alert you ahead of time if there were any issues, so.
Question for the board. Will, will, will the board still have to go through the process that was outlined in the RFP in terms of going through the evaluation criteria and actually scoring this proposal?
That's been done.
It has?
That has been done.
All right.
Well said.
Yep.
For the record, anyway.
No.
Very good.
Have to do it.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn? Second. Oops, I can't, sorry.
Second, second.
On favor?
On favor.
Jeff, you want?